This is the broadcast live, too?
Yeah. The chair has something recorded.
Okay, ready? Good evening. It's public hearing notice and I need to read this before we get started. The Board of Selectmen. Oh, I beg your pardon, yes. Let everyone know this is being digitally recorded as we are going. Board of Selectmen acting under the provisions of Chapter forty-three B, Section ten, will hold a public hearing at seven thirty P M. on Wednesday, June first, two thousand sixteen, in the Slade Building, seven A Main Street, for the purpose of the citizens petition article to be presented on the warrant for town meeting, permitting only once per fiscal year any proposition two and a half override. Interested taxpayers will be allowed the opportunity to present their views orally or in writing at the said hearing. What we will be doing is Mr. Ruston will speak first and then Susan will speak. And then I will be reading a statement from Jamie Pitney, who could not be here but asked that this be read into the record, then we'll be opening questions. So at this particular point, Ron.
I got about a three to five minute written speech here, so. Name's Ron Ruston, five Worling Woods Road, Hubbardston. Thank you for coming tonight for detailed discussion on the proposition, the petition for the amendment to the town charter. A lot of you know who I am, but you don't know my background. So I'll be brief. I was born and raised in Pittsburgh, went to Penn State for electrical engineering, moved to Worcester in nineteen eighty-four, had some time in Shrewsbury, and then I moved to Hubbardston in nineteen ninety-six after my fourth child was born. Completed my business management degree in two thousand six and will be continuing my MBA in default. I've been employed with the same company for thirty-two years as a, and as a test hardware manager, make decisions daily that affect my department's two and a half million dollar budget. I also have direct input on purchases for our international production departments. And I've been attending town meetings since nineteen ninety-six as well. I believe the following items should apply to town government. There should be a long-term plan between a five and a ten-year plan. The last I saw on the website was a ten-year plan was done in two thousand ten. I believe government should be stable. You shouldn't hire year after year after year and then lay off when times are tough. I call it right-sized government. I believe the government should have a financial responsibility to the taxpayers and use their money wisely. I also believe there should be controlled growth on spending. I believe governments should only do what the individual people cannot do. And what would happen there first would be the local government should do what the individuals can't do and you move up depending on the scale of the projects. I believe Prop two and a half, the law, Prop two and a half is the best tool for the taxpayers. And the ballot box is the best measure of the people's voice. The reason for the article petition came about, since about two thousand nine or ten era, the town had been advised, I believe in some capacity, and I cannot find the article that it was, the report, I think it was a state article, specific to Hubbardston. The town had been advised to spend all of the tax money, levy money on annual operating expenses, then ask for voters for big-ticket items outside the tax levy with Prop two and a half overrides. I don't believe this is good advice since Hubbardston rarely approves a Prop two and a half question. The fact that the Prop two and a half questions fail is really no way, in my opinion, to operate a government. The select board over the last decade has put up combined Prop two and a half ballot questions and when they fail, they deconstruct them to the individual components and submit, resubmit them again as an individual question. This shows a lack of respect to the voters, not just the ones who come to the board meetings or to town meetings, but all of the voters. Prop two and a half questions are a financial issue. The fiscal year starts in July and like businesses, a financial plan should be set and adhered to. I know someone who was on the finance committee for Royalston. He constantly touted that there was a longstanding agreement between the select board and the finance committee, not to bring the large capital spending to voters midterm, also known as sticking to a fiscal plan. In my twenty years in Hubbardston, I have not seen an emergency such that we needed to spend a large amount mid-year. The closest to an emergency would have been the ice storm of two thousand eight. With FEMA and MIMA money available, we did the cleanup. Once the total was counted and put on a Prop two and a half override question, we still shot that question down. That was in the state election of two thousand ten. Town's reserve funds should be our method to deal with emergencies, not Prop two and a half. This year, the proposed balance of free cash account after the ATM will be forty-five thousand dollars. This is due to using free cash to subsidize the operating budget. And I know that town council had been questioned about the authenticity or the legitimacy of the petition itself and it was, there were four, couple, a couple different items that were brought back about that. One was the town charter amendment does not need a formal review process like the one we needed to create the charter itself, but the process is outlined in Chapter forty-three B, Section ten, which is a hearing and a town vote of two-thirds to pass. The article is not prohibited by state constitution. Town council does have an opinion that it may have potential problems. Prop two and a half does not have any limitation as to when the questions may be put to the voters. It restricts, this petition would restrict the select board from performing their duties. One interesting fact I found when reading the rules guiding how this hearing should be held was the fact that the law prohibits submitting a town charter amendment more than once within a twelve-month period, which is exactly what this petition and the article itself is trying to do with respect to Prop two and a half questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan.
Okay. I'm Susan Rain and I live at ten Williamsville Road. I oppose the proposed charter amendment. It is a bad idea for three reasons. Number one, it contradicts and violates state law. Number two, the A G.'s office will strike it down. Number three, last but not least, it muzzles the free speech rights of our residents. The proposed amendment wants to bundle all Prop two and a half ballot questions. Why? Because those in favor of it think this means we will vote on these hard issues once and for all and not repeatedly. But that is not how our form of government works. And because that is not how it works, there are laws and traditions that stand in the way of this amendment. Our town council has said that the amendment is inconsistent with Prop two and a half for two reasons. The first, because Mass General Laws, Chapter fifty-nine, says, "When town meeting appropriations are contingent on a Prop two and a half vote, that vote must occur within ninety days of the town meeting." Bundling of these types of questions outside of the ninety-day window is not allowed. Secondly, because Prop two and a half itself contains no limits on the number of times these questions can be brought. The Mass Department of Revenue's guidance on Prop two and a half itself says that there are no limits. So when you take these two reasons together, it's clear that imposing limits on voting these questions is not kosher. Our town council also spoke with the A G.'s office, who said that under Chapter fifty-nine, Prop two and a half questions are placed on the ballot at the discretion of the Board of Selectmen, that this charter amendment would be seen as interfering with that discretion and that the A G. would likely strike it down as it has other bylaws that have tried to do the same thing. But just as importantly, this amendment, if passed, will derail citizen petitions if they try to revisit a Prop two and a half ballot question. Keep in mind that this censorship can cut both ways. Continued debate is not only not wrong, it is essential. Things change, people change, conditions change, and now more than ever, we need flexibility to handle the unexpected. Hubbardston has a lot of important problems to solve if we are to endure for another fifty years, let alone two hundred and fifty, and we can't and shouldn't bundle them all up for a look-see once a year. This amendment is probably not lawful and makes no sense from a governance point of view. If passed, it will probably be challenged and the fight will cost the town legal fees that it doesn't have to spend on a losing battle. Let's not do this. Let's defeat this amendment. Our current rules work just fine. And instead, let's debate the issues, just like we are right now, and keep our conversations free and open. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Before we open up questions, I'm going to read a statement that Jamie Pitney had asked to have written to the record as he could not be here this evening. Excuse me. It's addressed to Rayanne. I'd like to ask that you please read into the record the following statement "In opposition to Article thirty-four of the two thousand sixteen Annual Town Meeting Warrant, I rise virtually through email in opposition to this article on many grounds. I speak both as a registered voter and taxpayer of Hubbardston as well as a former charter committee chair. Emergency need. This amendment would hamstring the town with respect to calling a special town meeting and requesting for a previously presented and failed override question for an unforeseen emergency need but serving the same purpose. While it may not happen often, it is a useful and necessary part of legislating and governing. Charter conflict. If approved, this amendment would run contrary to Charter Article two dash three dash three, which requires the Board of Selectmen to place all articles on the warrant pursuant to the petitioner meeting the necessary requirements. Voter disenfranchisement. Following on the previous point, a voter or any authorized elected or appointed body can bring forward any article at any time, just as the petitioner of this article is doing. While there will always be disagreement and even frustration, if this is not the first time the article is being considered, voters must have the right to vote on it. Anything less than that is denying to hear the people's voice. Legality. As advised by town council, this amendment would not likely survive a legal review or challenge as it appears to run contrary to existing state regulations and laws, especially those pursuant to two and a half overrides. While I understand the petitioner's rationale for bringing the article forward, even if I disagree with it, I think the chosen path to remediate is not appropriate. Pursuant to Charter Articles six dash seven dash one, I would recommend that the petitioner serve on the upcoming Charter Review Committee. This, I believe, is the appropriate time to carefully and thoughtfully review all aspects of the charter, including provisions around the budget, process, and warrant articles. Further, any changes recommended would be through a majority of the committee, thus enjoying a greater likelihood of ratification. I thank everyone for their time in hearing my thoughts on this article as it is read to the public hearing. Jamie Pitney, fifty-two Barry Road." Excuse me. We'll now open it up to any questions you may have or comments. Ed?
One thing comes to mind in this is, let me make this example. We go to, we go to our annual town meeting and on that annual town meeting, we're trying to replace a fire truck. And the one we're trying to replace is probably worth fifty thousand dollars and the one we have to buy is four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So the townspeople decide that they're not going to go forward with that, live another year with that truck. So that happened in June. Okay, in August, as the, as that old fire truck is pulling out of the fire department, it gets hit by a cement truck. Gone, completely gone. Now the town is in a situation where they need fire protection. So how would you propose that the town would, you know, you have insurance money that will cover the ninety thousand dollar truck and you need a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar replacement? How would you propose with this, if this did pass, how would you propose that the town take that situation and deal with it?
Stabilization.
Stabilization. Four hundred and fifty thousand dollars might, might take all of it. I don't know what stabilization is now.
It's about that. It's about.
About that.
Should we also have more in our, more in our coffers as well? Should we, should we not also have more in our free cash?
Well, right, right now, I'll just interject. We, at the end of this, this fiscal year, with what we're putting into stabilization, we will actually have the targeted amount recommended by the Department of Revenue and our auditors of what is a good amount of stabilization. Too much stabilization, the ratings agencies and the auditors say that you're squandering too much money into stabilization and then, of course, too little, you don't have enough. It's kind of like your financial planner at home saying there's too much in the bank and not enough being invested kind of a deal, so.
Let me, let me, let me go one step forward.
But we don't invest it, so what do we do with it? You know, to have that money in reserve to be able to go off and pay for those long-term emergency, the big-ticket emergency items, that's what stabilization and free cash is for.
It is, so then according to this, so then how would, how would we get back our stabilization? You'd have to wait another year to then put it back to voters.
What happens if the stabilization was two fifty in my examples? You know, do you feel that our hands would be tied somewhat?
Well, to me, I think that would help long-term planning, which is what we don't do.
We've been doing long-term capital planning, as I recall, for the last ten, fifteen years.
Well.
And it hasn't, maybe it hasn't been updated in the last few years, but, you know, when I was on the finance committee, there was always a five-year and ten-year plan.
Well, it's not there on the website, which I'm only privy to.
That was put in place so that when the finance committee had to look at the finances, we would never have a year where we'd need six vehicles in the same year. We would spread them out between the.
Excuse us.
Peter, excuse me.
Excuse us.
He's talking. Okay, thank you.
So we would spread them out and never have to have a, you know, you don't want to go like this and then have a spike and need equipment, but what, why would we? Why would we want to take away a potential option that if it was necessary, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have the ability to do it?
Well, here's the problem. It's being done over and over again. I'm not taking away, I'm not proposing to take away the ability to do two and a half overrides. You have that at the beginning of the year. Like I said, this is a financial tool. This is, the beginning of the year is July first. That's when the financial plan should be set and done. You shouldn't go midterm and say, we need to have this or we need to have that.
You're a businessman and you have your two and a half million dollar budget. Certainly, you know, you can plan out the best possible year, but if you have a couple of hiccups in that year, how do you resolve? You know, you have to have the flexibility of financing in order to have all avenues available to you. And I think this would really shut down a significant avenue. I also feel that your message is heard loud and clear that taxpayers don't like the fact that things come up and then it was a close vote, so we'll bring them up again. Some of those had to come back on and get voted on again because they were brought back on by citizen petition. And we have no control over citizen petition. Whenever so many people sign that petition, then, then the town has to react. The other thing is that, you know, one of the downfalls of two and a half is the fact that if that petition comes forward, then we have to go through the expense of having a special town meeting and a ballot vote, which is probably between maybe around three thousand dollars. So just, just with thirty signatures, is that what it was for a petition?
Thirty, twenty.
Twenty, twenty something.
Twenty, twenty.
Yeah, twenty.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I believe it's a hundred if you want to.
Yeah.
Cause us a special.
But I, but I think, I think your point about having the town management make sure that once, once the townspeople have spoken, not to, not to revisit some, something. But if it's citizen petition, they have to.
Yep. I like to go back to when the business has a hiccup. You know, we go back to reserves. We have actual cash reserves. We have the ability to fund an upswing, an uptick in business or a disaster. We have a critical machine.
Do you have a line of credit?
Yeah.
That's what, that's what this is.
And we do too.
That's what this is.
But it's planned at the beginning of the year, not mid-year.
Right, but I bet you, but I bet your bank doesn't say, don't, if you need more money mid-year, don't come to us.
They have come to us in the past and said, you've, you've gone over your credit.
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure they have. If you don't meet your, yeah, if you don't meet your ratios.
Well, I'm not sure.
I invite you to fill the vacancy on the finance committee because we could certainly use someone with your interest and ability.
With my background in business and also with this town, I've got to say that corporate business and municipal business
I understand that too.
is entirely two different areas.
Boy, are they.
Peter?
Susan, your point well taken. I'd invite Mr. Ruston to not only join finance committee but because of his pointing up that we don't have a town plan, I would certainly invite him to also participate in the planning board, which is currently trying to construct such a document for where we're going for the next ten years. And certainly I welcome all of your participation. And I'm not going to disagree with Ed, although I'm just going to continue on some of that. I think, I, what we're talking about is in particular, because Mike likes to go in particulars, this two and a half proposition. But I would suggest that, and I take this from what Ed ended up with, is that the town's perceptions is that the select board, excuse me, Jeff, excuse me, Mike, this has happened long before you joined, has repeatedly used special town meetings to push their agenda because they know that if we have a special town meeting, that they, that fewer people will show up at it and that they can push that, push, push something on, particularly the charter, which I was certainly not in favor of and which, you know, I'm not ashamed to say. That passed by nine votes in a special town election after it was defeated in a regular town election. I know you served on that board.
The charter committee, no?
The committee, didn't you serve on the charter committee? Okay, excuse me, Ed. But that Jamie Pitney certainly did. And his predictions as to where, what the charter was going to do for our town certainly have not followed through. All of the savings that he, that he and his committee projected have not come through. And in fact, instead of, instead of increasing citizen participation in our local town government, it's decreased it. Witness what's going on in the finance committee where you have a real problem. At one point in the last year, we had no finance committee at all. Into the select board and pointed them. That's supposed to be an elected position. We have the state, we do not have a housing commit, any kind of housing in this town, which is mandated by the state for our committee on preservation. We don't have a representative on the community preservation committee for housing because we don't have anybody elected to the housing. All of the things that we were promised that the charter was going to solve. There's been a consolidation of power in the select board and I think there's a lot of people in town who perceive these kind of activities. And I know I'm just, I'm just coat-wracking on what you're saying, okay? It has nothing to do with what you're saying. But it's a general perception in town that the select board uses these kind of special town committees and special votes to push through things that they wish to see rather than, than what the people of town really feel. It's not representative. But, excuse me, Jeff, that I interrupted your meeting. I was just trying to check with Mr. Murray here about who is actually on the Capitol. You were talking about stabilization and where we're going with Capitol planning. We've had, at one point in the last year, one person who was on Capitol planning. When I asked Phil about it, he says, oh, Susan's on it now. You still don't have anybody from planning, from planning on it? You don't have anybody from the planning board as far as I know?
I thought Mary Ann, I thought Mary Ann was on it.
We have four members though.
And has she shown up for meetings?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
But that, that has nothing to do with the charter and.
I know, I'm not talking, I'm just, listen, I'm just ranting.
So, you know, when you say, and this is a little bit away from this public.
Yes, we're getting off topic everybody.
Yeah, real man.
Okay.
I agree. Again, I'm just, I'm just saying the temper of the town about this kind of stuff where if it doesn't work at town meeting, then you have a select, then you have a special town meeting, which I agree, costs the town money and then it goes on the ballot even though it's been voted down by the, by much, many more people at the town meeting. And then you only have less than a hundred people at a special town meeting and then you get the motivation from certain people to go and push their agenda forward. And yes.
Right, but isn't it, isn't it beautiful? I mean, and it's, and that's, that's, yeah.
Well, I don't know if it's democracy or chicanery.
Well, it can, not, anything can be abused. Does that mean it should come off the table as a tool for municipal finance?
To your point about, about the illegality of this particular point that Mr. Ruston is bringing about, the illegality would only be if the select board or the town chose to, to go against what he had to say.
Well, a citizen's, a citizen's petition would be brought. They would be obligated to, and that would be the trigger.
If this is passed and if the town does not contest it, where's the, where's the, where's the problem? Unless the town contests it.
The town will contest it.
Well, that's what, that's exactly, so there you go. You're coming right back to the whole thing.
Problem could also exist at the state level.
No, 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 wait a minute. The town, the state is not going to contest this. You're going to have people.
Yes, they would if it's.
Yes, they will because it's going to go to the A G. to be approved.
And then either approves it or denies it.
No town ballots.
The town won't even have to dispute it. It will, it has to be sent to the attorney general who reviews it and then decides if it's legal or not.
Yep.
They will strike.
Thank you.
Mike?
So I guess two points, two different points. One is to Mr. Jeff's point here that the charter has consolidated power at the select board, which is completely false. The only real changes, structural changes to charter made was they made a town manager more, town administrator more autonomous. Planning board is still duly elected. Finance committee is elected. Parks commission's elected. All the, all the other boards are still elected. The ones that were appointed before are still appointed. The only big change we made for, from an elected position to an appointed position was a, was a town clerk because that person gets valuable experience, goes to school, gets a lot of experience doing the town clerk job and shouldn't have to worry about getting run out of office every three years. So I strongly disagree with the point that the, that the charter has consolidated power at the select board. My second point is, I agree with Mr. Ruston that it's bad policy for the board to continue to bring items back and back and back and back and back. And I can say certainly for our board in the last couple of years, that hasn't been an issue. Previous, I remember previous time it was an override, then was split up and brought back again. You know, I was disappointed and I think the majority of our board was disappointed with the citizen's petition to bring the senior center back after the fact. And we made that known in all the meetings. That was not, you know, that was not hidden.
That's right.
However, I welcome the ability to be able to do that for somebody. So although I may not agree with it, I think to have that, squash that tool for people to bring a petition for something is foolish.
Thank you. Rayanne?
I just want to clarify a couple of things because municipal budgeting is a very different beast than general business budgeting. Your stabilization accounts, you have two. Best practices are, is one is supposed to always be a five percent. The other one should always be a three percent. And after this town meeting, they both will be in a good position. That's what creditors look at when you go out to purchase. That's what auditors look at to see how stable your budget is. And so to constantly hit that will, will give the town a lesser rating. And so we want to prevent that. The other thing too is with free cash, you want to be spending free cash. That's why the state gives it to you. And if the state starts seeing that you're not spending your free cash, they're going to keep it. They're not going to give it back to you. and if the state starts seeing that you're not spending your free cash, they're gonna keep it, they're not gonna give it back to you. And so, and then as far as five year or ten year planning, we are currently in the process, myself, the tax collector treasurer and our accounting staff, Eric Kinship and Amy, of creating a five year financial forecast. And we're giving them everything, we're giving them union contracts, we're giving them where our equipment stands, where everything that can come to mind that could possibly hit this town in the next five years is being given to Eric.
Do we have that now?
Well, I'm hoping that when I meet with him tomorrow, he will have something, at least a beginning stage to present at town meeting.
Did we have that the last few years?
I don't have anything that I can currently pull out.
We, we had individual plans, we had a fire department ten year plan, a police department plan, uh, so we had individual plans but nothing that was necessarily a, a combined uh plan. And certainly our master plan, which goes into much more than just financial planning, um, is, you know, from the eighties I believe, right?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, late eighties.
Late eighties.
Eighty-eight, so, you know, the planning board needs, is gonna start revisiting that chapter by chapter now to, to update that.
And that has to be revisited and.
Hmm.
It's, it's expensive, I mean, it's expensive process.
Just a minute, Ed, you had your hand up and you can.
Um, I wanted to comment on Ed's comment earlier. He uh mentioned about if the fire truck, one of ours, gets completely destroyed in the next and we need the full four hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred thousand, if we have free cash and stabilization and we only have so much, do we really need to have a brand new truck? Or can we settle with one that's a little less extravagant as a half million dollar truck? We don't really need to get a brand new truck to save the old one.
Yeah, I've, agreed a hundred percent and over the last couple of years, a lot of things we have bought have been used, I mean graders and things like that, it have been used. Um, things like fire trucks, like for the ambulance, we used the ambulance for example, we looked around for a used ambulance and what you found for a used ambulance on the market was what we were trying to get rid of. Um, and the same thing, uh, I forget, engine four, one of the fire trucks, engine four, um, the frame, it's almost thirty years old, the frame went, it was no good, we had to replace it. Again, the fire department, myself, Anita, the town administrator, we were looking around at all the websites and, you know, Bob has a lot more contacts than, than everybody else. What could we find? And what you were finding was twenty year old trucks, twenty-five year old trucks that, yeah, they were sub a hundred thousand dollars, but we're basically trading in our problems for somebody else's problem, so we've been trying our best to get used equipment when we can. We got a used, um, again, I think the, the grader was used, we just upgraded, we took a ninety fund, so we've been trying to get used equipment when we can.
Yep.
Sometimes it absolutely makes sense, if you can get something used, by all means, we're not gonna put the heavy use on it that Boston will, um, that they need something new.
Yeah.
Um, but some of the things, again, towns keep for so long and when they get rid of them, they're, they're basically what we're getting with them too.
Yeah, I'd like to add one thing to that based on discussions we've had with the fire department, going on the example, depending upon the truck. Um, one of the costs that are unique to, to us because of our building situations is the fire truck has to be custom made.
That's true.
To fit into the, what we call our fire station, which is a barn. That's an enormous expense when you have to have a custom made fire engine.
That's true.
So that you just don't get a used vehicle or anything that's just gonna work for us and this is just unique to us, but that's just something that's going on.
That brings up another point is why do we spend the extra money on a fire truck to get it custom made? When we could be spending the money on the facility so we don't have to be, I mean.
Well, we.
I remember, um, some numbers were thrown around for the newer fire truck, uh, somewhere up to three hundred thousand to have it lowered and custom made to fit.
That's right.
Mm-hmm.
That's right.
That, that's a lot of money that could have been put into that uh facility to upgrade it and make it a little more suitable for the fire trucks.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And, I mean, we're talking about fire trucks, but we're not purchasing fire trucks, that's not, I mean, this is all hypothetical, this is all hypothetical, so.
Right. That's not, right.
I, I just wanted to comment, you're, you're absolutely true, I mean, uh, we could bond it and pay fifty thousand a year for ten years or, or whatever to get that truck. Uh, the point being, you know, sometimes depending upon those situations that come through town, you know, it's nice to have all of the financing options available for you. I mean, this town done, I think, sent, sent a strong message to, you know, the taxpayers have decided that, you know what? Uh, we have to live in our family budgets within our means, so we expect the town to do the same. And I think that, uh, um, you know, I think that everybody in town understands that. The other point I wanna come back to is, this'll be my forty-fifth annual meeting that I'm going to in June. And I've seen, I've seen management come and go in this town, selectmen good, some so-so good, some not so good. And I can tell you that the management we have now as a select board is probably some of the strongest management that I've seen in the forty-five years of myself being in town. And they care about people and they care about the, the trust factor. And you know what, uh, I think the, the current board has developed a, a very strong trust factor with the people in town, which previous select boards, um, probably didn't do a, as strong as, as that current select.
Thanks Ed.
Thank you.
Can I? Um, Bonnie Cunningham, I ragged, live on Ragged Hill Road, uh, I'm a resident, a member of the council on aging and a senior center proponent. And I believe I echo the concerns of a number of town residents when I expressed dismay and opposition to the proposed charter change, planned for an article at town meeting this month. It appears that this proposal is a knee-jerk reflex instituted by a small group who circu- circulated a citizen's petition for a change to the charter to prevent any revisiting of a proposition two and a half article was not passed except at the next year's annual meeting. The way it is worded does not distinguish between a prop two and a half override and a prop two and a half debt exclusion. Debt exclusions get paid down and go away, overrides are forever. A lot of people still do not understand this distinction and thus are resistant to their use to finance improvements, infrastructure. This group, which is bringing the proposed charter change, which had only twenty-four signatures on its petition, enough to make it legitimate, but still not a tremendous amount of support, does not necessarily speak for a majority of our townspeople. This is in sharp contrast to the three hundred and fifty plus residents who signed the petition last summer to readdress the vote for a new senior center at the special town meeting in the fall. Now, a lot of people feel that the citizens shot themselves in the foot by looking at, having this looked at again so soon, however. Um, it, while it passed at the fall meeting, it failed at the ballot box, but only by fifty votes. It had failed by a large majority at the ballot box when bundled with the public safety building at the annual meeting. Those three hundred and fifty people obviously felt that the senior center deserved to be considered on its own merits and signed the petition accordingly. This small group has used this tactic of a proposed charter change to seriously delay or even deny everyone else the opportunity of having a new senior center. If this passes at the annual meeting, the senior center, which town officials have been considering putting on a special town meeting in the fall, would not be able to be voted on until the June meeting in two thousand seventeen, a whole year away. It would be a shame to delay for so long a project that has a lot of support in town. It would be nice to have the center built and be having a grand opening in the year of our two hundred and fiftieth anniversary. This charter change would also perhaps, have perhaps an unintended consequence. It would hamstring the select board and prevent them from accessing any large amount of emergency funds if they were needed in the event of a problem like a severe weather emergency like the ice storm of two thousand eight. Charter changes are cumbersome, constricting and difficult to reverse in a reasonable length of time. This one is an unnecessary move that is being proposed for a single purpose, to prevent allowing the townspeople to vote to approve the senior center.
Thank you, Bonnie. Thank you.
We had more signatures for that petition, but I only turned in one page, we had more.
Well, there were two pages that I saw and there were only, I think, your name and about three or four of your family members were on the last page.
That.
And that was it.
That, I had more, I had more pages.
Oh, okay, okay.
I can second that as well.
Yeah, um, you said that there's no distinction between overrides and by, uh, mass law, there really is no distinction, you have to put it on a ballot and that's what this is trying to prevent.
It still is, is, one gets paid down, the other one is forever.
I understand that and there's no distinction between which one it's trying to, uh, restrict, it's going to restrict both types.
Right.
That was, that was the attempt.
That was your point, yeah.
Right.
Hmm.
And, I forget the last one, I was gonna say, tough getting old, um. I cannot remember, oh, this was not about any one particular item, it was not about senior center, it was not about the propos- uh, proposed, uh, s- public safety building. It's about the fact of redoing over and over and over again, which goes against the voters at the ballot box.
What's our voter turnout?
Thousand.
And then around tw- out of how many registered voters?
Three thousand.
So we have a thirty percent?
Yep.
Oh, okay, so.
At the ballot.
Right, at the ballot.
Yeah, at the ballot, yeah.
Not, not at town meetings.
Yeah.
Right, 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 but my, my, but my point is, is that the voter, the voters, there's a lot more voters than just the thirty percent
I think, um, the senior, uh.
and that's, that's the point of, that's the point of, uh, the, uh, the flexibility in the revisiting because you've got a.
Revisiting.
And when we do, we have more vo- more voters turn out and it's typically stark, more stark in the no against prop two and a half.
Well, there was only fifty on the, uh, against the senior center the second time around.
So.
When it was bundled, it was like two hundred and fifty of those, so there is definitely some, at least a certain amount of support for the senior.
Right, my only observation is that it's a minority that is, that is making the decisions in the first place.
Sure.
I, I think that the.
Otherwise known as the town meeting.
Hold it, excuse me.
The, uh.
No.
The voter turnout during the second time was more of tiresome voters.
Oh, really?
They were, they already voted no, they already said no and no means no, so when they heard it was coming back for another vote, they're like, a lot of us work, a lot of us sometimes don't even get back in time to vote, so I think they prioritized and said, I, I don't need to, uh, vote on this one. So, it was still not, but.
It's, it's impossible, um, let's not finish, let me, the, um, the, the vote, oh, I know what it was, I don't know whether any of you knew or whether anybody watching knows that the Golden Ages have published a new cookbook for, in honor of our two hundred and fiftieth anniversary, I'll give them a plug, it's fifteen dollars. Uh, but, um, in the front, it gives a, a short reading from the Massachusetts Gazetteer of eighteen seventy-three and the last sentence in that was a real kicker for me because it said that the tax rate was fourteen dollars, I mean, I'm sorry, a dollar forty-three per hundred dollars of valuation, that's eighteen seventy-three, this is two thousand sixteen and our tax rate is what, fourteen dollars and thirty cents a thousand people, we, we have grown and, and developed our town the way we could.
That tax basis is on two, two factors, on one, one, the tax rate and then the, the other, the assessment of property value.
The asset value, yeah.
You know, you can do a reassessment, have your assessments go up and the tax rate come down, but still pay more taxes.
Right.
But I thought that was amazing when I saw that there was, there was such, uh, parallelism there.
So, I, I had heard a story from, from folks and I don't know how true it is, cause this was a long time ago, but back in the very early eighties when prop two and a half was gonna get passed in town and it was gonna set your tax rate on whatever your previous tax rate was for the year. What I had heard was that Hubbardson voters at town meeting in order to depress the tax rate that would be set with tou- with prop two and a half, flooded the budget with, um, free cash and stabilization and all this stuff and pushed it into the budget, which lowered the tax rate and then it got set by prop two and a half, so as Hubbardston, we've been behind the eight ball for thirty years.
It was artificially lowered.
It's been artificially lowered thirty years ago, um, from where it should be.
Hmm.
And then, again, I heard that, I don't know if that's that firsthand, but I heard that from several people that, you know, we should be here, but we're really here
It's impossible.
because of the town not looking forward.
Right, we, you're an anomaly in all of northern Worcester County, when you look at the, the tax rates, they're up anywhere between sixteen, I think, what is, like, Nashville, it was like twenty, two, something like that.
It's usually, it's about sixteen to twenty in these central districts.
Yeah, and, and where the law is, I mean, we can take pride in that up to a point, but we also ought to be a little embarrassed about it when we look at our infrastructure.
And I went to a, uh, this was last year, and this is totally separate from you, you can close the meeting if you want, but this is just interesting, it was, that's, a, a workshop for regional school districts last year, went to them. And they were talking about prop two and a half and how it's strangling regional districts and everything. It was interesting, they put a, a graph up of the, um, inflation over time and inflation's been three, three-ish, three, three and a half percent over time.
Hmm.
And prop two and a half is two and a half, so they were starting to diverge over time, so that's when the state said, we're gonna give local aid because our towns can't keep up with, with everything, so that's what local aid was, was to bridge that gap between two and a half and inflation. And then over time, the state started cutting back on the, um, the local aid, so again, towns are now starting to, to, to feel it. So it was just interesting comparing two and a half and, I don't wanna debate two and a half, but two and a half and, uh, inflation just hasn't kept up.
Hmm.
You know, fuel's getting more, everything's getting more expensive, but yet the tax rates across the state aren't keeping up with, with inflation. It was an interesting workshop that, that they had.
I'll ask other, any more comments or questions?
One more.
Okay.
If I did the checking correctly, from two thousand eight, calendar year two thousand eight, through to last year, uh, one prop two and a half override or debt exclusion went through, maybe I missed one or two in a special town election, but from two thousand eight.
I think you're right.
I want to see, that sounds right.
No, I think it was, I think you're right.
History or not, yeah.
I, I think the last one that went through was the f- fire truck, the big, the big fire truck, I think that, that, that's a, that's a debt exclusion, so that, I think that only has a year or two left to pay.
Big fire truck, yeah. Yeah. I think there was something on the, uh, school, the green.
It was a school, school green.
Yeah.
That, that was probably even further back.
Yeah.
Right, right.
But, you know, I'm not sure if there's a trust in what's presented to the voters with respect to what's really needed or not. I'm not sure if that's the reason why.
I think we're just tight Yankees frankly.
I'll join you there.
Yeah.
I think it might be, uh, prudent to, uh, really take a long look at whether th- uh, this, uh, article as presented, um, is in conflict with proposition two and a half and I don't know whether our legal, our legal counsel has, has ruled on that. Cause they always look over all of our articles and, um, if, if it is, because if, if it isn't, then it would make sense to withdraw the article before going through, um, a town for exercise.
Well, whoever's left at the end of this extensive meeting on next Tuesday.
You think, you think you can weed enough people out with all that other stuff that you'll have nothing left to vote for?
I, I didn't place it there, I didn't place it at the last one.
Thank you, sorry.
Sir.
I think the point is, um, I remember watching one of the, uh, town meetings when they decided to put the, um, two and a half override for the school budget on. I know a lot of them didn't agree with it, but they also decided that it's up to the townspeople to decide. So, I'm, I'm sure a lot of people don't agree with this, but I think it should stay on the article, go to the town meeting, up for discussion and I'd like to hear what most of the town thinks of it, honestly.
The meeting you're referring to, if I might just interject, because I was one of the ones of the, the board members that requested that it stay so that it get beyond the warrant, so that the information can get out to the townspeople, specifically in terms of these education that, the, we were not, and are not supporting the two and a half, but we also don't want the people to think that this problem's gonna go away. Um, the education, as I mentioned in the other room, just the educational problem that we're facing right now, uh, is certainly not gonna, um, go away or get less and, um, the override that the superintendent is asking for is only to get them through next year. So we can expect this is going to come up again and again simply because costs keep going up, so that's why I asked that it stay on there cause I, I think we need to get the information out to the people, just that very thing, but this isn't gonna go away, so.
The school has a, a large, every year has a large excess and deficiency account, they also have school choice monies.
Hmm.
Uh, they have a lot of things that they can adjust to the budget. Uh, they have a lot of things that they can adjust to the budget to do with.
Mm-hmm. Susan, do you have anything else you'd like to say?
I think, um, totally off topic at this point, but I would, I would say that, uh, FinCom is gonna be taking a real close look at all of that going forward.
Mike?
Uh, just closing comments for me, and I just wanna say, Ron, I don't agree with this, but thank you for doing it because I think by doing stuff like this, it makes everything better. So, um, thank you.
Any other comments? If not, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you, Rayanne.
Hi.
At eight, uh, thirty-six PM. Thank you very much. Thank you both.